Reporting in progress.
Brian.
Oh, Russ. Can you hear me okay?
I can. Yeah, we're we got kind of a slow wifi, so we're trying to get that fixed.
Russ, can you hear me? This is Walt.
Sure can, Walt. We're we're a little slow on our wifi, so we're trying to get that fixed. So if you guys. Okay. Under conference room. Okay.
Hi, Aaron.
Okay, and then it's.
Aaron, this is Walt. Hi.
Hey Walt, hang in there. We gotta get onto the other wifi side.
I'm talking to you from South Carolina.
Okay, guys, we're we're trying to improve our wifi, but it looks like we're at least connected for now. I'm going to be turning my screen around so it faces Jim as he makes his presentation, and then I'll share my screen for the information. So if you all are good. If you've got, if you have a question, you want to put it in the chat, I'll be monitoring that. Also, if you've, if you've got a question or you wanted to make a comment during the presentation, just raise your hand, and then I will bring you in as a panelist, or you can just unmute yourself and answer your question, ask your question, okay? All right.
The hands up. If I'm here, you can still see them.
Yeah, okay.
We ready to call the meeting order?
We are ready. Let me make sure the meeting's being recorded. Yeah, we're we're good to go.
Okay, this is the Public Facilities District for Kitsap Special Meeting on November fifteenth, twenty twenty two. And we are ready to begin.
Did you want to see if there's any public comment?
Yes.
Okay, so if anybody's got any public comment, anything they'd like to make, raise your hand or put it in the chat. Okay, I don't see any hands raised.
And there's no public comment, we'll move on to agenda three.
All right. Let me pull that up for you. Okay. Everybody on the screen, just give me a thumbs up if you can see the presentation. Okay, great. Thank you, Walt. All right, Mr. Town, I'm going to turn it over to you. It's all yours, sir.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Do I need to get closer to the mic?
Actually, if you could get a little closer, it would help me.
Here. All right.
Be your van away here.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you, Russ, for the invitation, and thank you to the board for allowing us to present this information about possible event center bond funding alternatives. I would say please feel free to jump in with questions. I want to make this a discussion and dialogue, but we do have some slides that are prepared. I understand that that we we've that people have seen these yesterday, so so perhaps, you know, you'll have some questions as we go through, but I I'll start out with just a on the next page, just a quick summary of sort of four, four structures or four thoughts about alternatives for financing the event center portion of the CNW project. The first thing I want to say is the five percent facility fee in is pledged in any one of these scenarios, so that that's a given in in any bond that the KPFD would issue, the five percent facility fee would be the expected source of payment for the bonds, and and that that revenue stream is available for debt service. What we're talking about here are ways that we could possibly enhance the event center bonds to make them more saleable to investors. And and as I said, there's four four possibilities. There are more than four probably, but I've come up with four general possibilities, and we can fine tune details you know, in in other conversations. The first, the first scenario would be a gross sales tax pledge. What that means is selling senior sales tax revenue bonds that would be supported by the sales tax rebate dollars, and those dollars would be supported, they would support any obligation, debt obligation of KPFD, that's a senior debt obligation. So right now, there's some debt outstanding. There's a refinancing in process that is expected to close in December. Those those bonds are being paid by the gross sales tax receipts. If you were to pledge those gross sales tax receipts to an event center bond, that those dollars would be pledged, not not expected to be used for payment again, because we expect to use the facility fee for payment, but those would be pledged on a gross basis to to the bonds under scenario one. Scenario two is a subordinate pledge of those sales taxes, and the difference is all senior debt would be covered by the sales tax dollars, and only the leftover money after paying senior debt would be available to help support the event center bonds in case the facility fee was not enough, not not enough to to make those payments. The third scenario, no sales tax pledge at all. The bonds are just issued on their own merit with the five percent facility fee, and that's all the bondholders get. And then the fourth scenario is some kind of credit enhancement, and the credit enhancement could come in the form of a a double A guarantee from the county or from some other entity that has a very high rating could credit enhance the bonds, and there's multiple sources there, but the most logical I put on this slide is Kitsap County in this is for this scenario. Let's go to the next page.
May I ask the question?
Yes, please.
What what's the likely difference in the the interest rate and the terms of a bond between the second and third option that you gave us, the subordinate bonds and the bonds that are that are not guaranteed by the sales tax?
If you don't mind, we could wait till we get to page number seven, where I have a summary of the four options in in numerical.
That's that's fine. I was just interested in their relative cost.
So on the second scenario, the subordinate sales tax revenue, when you say that whatever is not used for the senior bonds is used to pay for them. So how does that deal with our operating expenses? If we were to go to that, would they, we have zero money for operating expenses? Would they take all of it?
I believe that there would be a carve out for your for your operating expenses along with current debt service, and then the remainder, the remaining balance would be would be the amount that would be pledged.
So the carve out would include.
We could, we could carve out.
Rent, all that stuff that we have.
I think thirty five thousand now a month is what you have in there, Russ.
Yeah, I think our budget next year, we're going to budget for about a three hundred and sixty to three hundred and ninety thousand dollar annual budget, so anywhere from thirty to thirty three thousand dollars a month.
So that's a matter of what we write into the document, and that's kind of in the, you know, in some of the detail, but but yes, you can you can write it that way.
Is my other question on this, these four? Did they come up, did you look at going to other entities and splitting up this bond?
That's kind of what number four alludes to. I called it credit enhanced bonds, but you know, if if other communities wanted to borrow some of it, or or you know, spread out the 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 obligation under to to different to different entities, it gets a little complicated to do that, honestly, but that that's kind of what item four is. It's a it's I called it credit support, but it's it's really, it's really spreading out the risk to other entities, and I I know Russ was interested in that scenario. I I think I I see that as more of a long shot scenario, honestly, but but it's it's a it's a possibility.
So if that must have happened, how would they do it? Would they do, let's say you had three partners, each would bond like seven million dollars on their own? Or would they all have?
He, I mean, that that's a, you can put it, you can dream up what you want to dream up, and we can, you know, we can structure it any any way, any way you want.
Okay.
Twenty percent, forty percent, you know what I mean? It could be, it could be whatever structure we we could collectively come up with. That's why I kind of generically called it a credit enhanced bond, but it's, you know, it's a catchall for other structures that involve other municipalities or other governmental entities that would have a, you know, a would have a be receiving economic benefit for the project. Want to go through a couple of more little more detailed slides about the various alternatives, in particular for the gross revenue pledge. Those are, those kinds of bonds are typically, again, senior obligations, those they can qualify for for a rating from a rating agency, and we talk about ratings being investment grade, that would be something from a triple B minus all the way up to a triple A. Rating agencies have a lot of criteria, a couple of things that they look at, our debt service coverage and additional bonds. So what this generally gets to in in a high level is what's the debt capacity? How much gross sales tax debt can you have? So I put a table down at the bottom of this page that shows two scenarios. One, two point four million dollars worth of sales taxes in twenty twenty two. How much debt service can you can you have? Based on a few assumptions, one of those assumptions is a six percent interest rate, the other is a one point two five coverage ratio. That means for two point four million in sales taxes, you can only have one point nine million in debt service. You you won't be allowed to have a high rating without having some additional coverage over and above the debt, the debt service, and that translates to about twenty million dollars in what I would call senior senior debt. If the if the revenue is about three million dollars, that's a two point four million dollar debt service payment to keep the one twenty five coverage, or approximately twenty five million in debt. This is just meant to be a rough ballpark idea as to how much senior gross sales tax debt can be supported by those revenues. Now that would leave in these two scenarios, four hundred and eighty thousand or six hundred thousand for other for for other uses. And that's, again, it could be used for the operating, it's it could be used for other other projects as as they come up, but that's a sort of a high level debt capacity based on those assumptions.
How did you come up with the amount of of sales tax revenue? What goes into that?
Yeah, for twenty twenty two, I looked at the last board packet, and I was looking at about a run rate of about two hundred thousand dollars per month, and so I just rounded it up to two point four million. It might only be two point three five this year, but I I don't know what the exact number will be. I just rounded it up to two point four million to make the math a little easier.
Okay.
And then the three million, I I just ramped the two point four up by three percent per year, and I just picked another year and and said, what what would it look like, you know, six, eight years out?
All right, thank you.
The subordinate, the subordinate sales tax pledge is is probably not an investment grade rated kind of bond. It's a higher interest rate. We'll talk about some of the the different, the differences in interest rates when we get to slide on page seven. But it pres, if if you if you pledge just the subordinate, the leftover sales tax, it preserves debt capacity for future financings for future projects that need debt financing. And so I've done a an abbreviated table here where I started out with two point four million in the the sales tax revenues, again, ramped up on the left side by three percent per year. I show the existing debt service, and this chart only goes to twenty twenty seven, but the full chart is found in a appendix A, appendix appendix B, sorry. So the existing debt service is what I I got from Scott and Ryan, and this is, this is a post refinancing in December, and then I've just built in a a window for additional projects that don't have any debt service right now, because there are no other, there are are no other senior bonds outstanding. The column that is labeled revenues above debt service, the third from the right column, would be what would be left over as a subordinate pledge to event center bonds of CNW. And right next to that column, you can see the projected debt service for the event centers starts in two thousand twenty five, and you can see that in today's, in today's world, there would be enough money in a subordinate pledge to cover a hundred percent of the event center debt service. If in the future you were to issue bonds on a senior basis that come into column under project one or project two or project three, that would affect the available subordinate revenue for the event center bonds. But again, we're we're only trying to use that subordinate pledge as a back as a backup plan, not as the source of payment for those bonds. The source of payment is is the five percent facility fee.
Um, this is Walt Draper. Um, we've committed for up to twelve million dollars to another project in Port Orchard, and then we've committed also to two other projects. The amounts are not quite as quite as certain. I I'm, I'm trying to figure out how you got the revenues above debt service for those senior three projects.
Yeah, in this table, the senior three projects are not are not in there. When we get to appendix C and D, I'll show you an illustration where I put in a couple of additional projects, and I'll show you what that what that looks like.
All right, thank you.
So next page.
From time, from time to time, I'm going to just pull down the participants list. I'm going to see if anybody has any hands raised, so I can I can recognize you. So that's why I'm doing this from time to time, so apologize ahead of time.
This slide shows a straight facility fee revenue bond. So again, remember that we we had talked about at a prior meeting, five percent of gross revenues, and the definition for gross revenues, I I inserted into this into this slide, but revenue from event tickets, concessions, catering, facility rental, you can you can see what what that represents. That's the same definition we've been using. This kind of bond is a non-investment grade bond that would have a limited number of investors. They'd have to be institutional or accredited investors. It will have the highest interest rate. It does preserve your ability to sell sales tax debt up against your your sales tax revenues for future projects. And just as a refresher, just as a reminder, those revenues that we're projecting for year one would be three million forty thousand. That's about, you know, sixty plus million dollars worth of gross revenue times five percent. This is the topic of the feasibility study that is underway, is is over fifty percent completed. The feasibility consultants are working diligently to to get us that feasibility study, and the the final, the date that the the last date they can deliver that to us is the thirteenth of January. We're hoping to get it sooner. So as soon as that's available, we'll have an independent feasibility study that shows a validation or or describes what they believe is the, you know, the revenue available for for debt service for this project, including including the calculation of the five percent for the facility fee revenue bonds.
And will that feasibility study be have have the necessary information in it to go to the Department of Commerce? Should we elect to do that?
Yes.
So this scenario is basically self because it's based on a revenue bond.
It's a hundred percent self-supported revenue bond that doesn't have any sales tax pledge associated with it whatsoever.
So so what happens if the revenue doesn't meet this pay the bond?
If the if the revenue, well, there there's a bunch of steps that happen first. There's a reserve fund that contains one year debt service reserve. There's a second reserve that is established under the CNW debt that is a a public partner reserve that would that would be released should that first debt service reserve not get replenished, and then if there's no money, the the bonds would not get paid.
So they would default or who's credit would that go against?
That that would go against the the project itself. I mean, if there's no revenue at all coming in for the project, that would mean that the CNW debt would have defaulted also, and every every piece of debt associated with this project would have defaulted. It's a, that means there's no revenue at all, nothing happening. Then the way we've structured the revenue for these bonds, the three million dollars, it comes out after operating expenses for CNW, comes out at the same time as the lease payment for the land, so that it so that it's a higher priority in the in the payment stream than the CNW debt, so that things would have to be really bad for there to be no revenue coming in at the top of the waterfall, which I'll show you a diagram on the in a later slide.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the PFD's name is on this revenue bond also.
The this revenue bond would be issued by the PFD.
You know, everybody who's a panelist could just unmute.
Yeah.
So you don't have to check.
Yeah, matter of fact, yeah, let me. Joel and and Andrew and Jim, I'm going to bring you guys in as panelists so that you can you can speak as well. Let me do that real quick. Okay, Andrew, Jim, and Joel, you all can chime in as you need to, okay?
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, this this table is an illustration of the facility fee revenue stream on the left hand side, that the first year is a is only a nine month partial, so that's why it's not three million forty, it's two million two eighty, but you can see it ramping up by three percent per year through twenty forty one, with the estimated event centered debt service next to it, and a coverage calculation, how much more revenue is there than debt service? This illustration shows that the debt could be retired by KPFD with this revenue stream, this projected projected revenue stream by twenty thirty five, so in twelve years, if if all of the revenues were used to retire debt or accumulated in an account and used to retire debt. The debt itself would would be set with a maturity of twenty forty one, but it could be paid off, could be paid off early.
This one here?
Yeah, there's just those.
Yeah, there's a three percent increase in the the revenue on the left hand side, the facility fee revenue, based just an inflation increase. Yeah. And then the debt is cat has capitalized interest, so there's no debt payments the first two years. And then the footnote on the revenue for the first year was only nine months rather than twelve months twenty twenty five.
Jim, does the, can the district, I guess, is just, does the money revenues have to be used for debt service payments, or can the district use any surplus funds for other purposes?
Right, and that's a good question. You know, when it comes to, when it comes to structuring this indenture with with the CNW debt for the project, coupled with KPFD debt and potentially debt based on the the lease payments to the port of Bremerton, we, like I said, we'll have a a structure where those dollars come out at the top, but bondholders for CNW are going to be very, they're going to be looking at the particulars of the, you know, the revenue streams and and you know, they'll they'll want the KPFD to be required to pay off their bonds as early as possible, so that it frees up the five percent facility fee for their senior bonds. That's what they're going to want. What can we get away with in terms of marketing those bonds? I I don't know the answer to that until we have all the, you know, the entire debt structured and how and then go out to the market and start talking to the market about it, but I would suggest that we would allow that that facility fee to run through the maturity date of the bonds, and that, you know, those revenues could be freed, could be freed up, but that the bondholders may have a different, they may have a different opinion about that, depending on how the coverage looks on the senior debt for CNW, because remember, that's going to be about sixty eight million dollars worth of of senior project debt representing about sixty percent of the capital staff. So our our goal is to set up a an indenture structure that is saleable on to 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 all the investors and is fair to all of the investors, including the KPFD bond investors and the CNW bond investors. So I I can't answer precisely, but I can say that what we'll do is it will we'll get it, we'll we'll make it as free as we can. But there there will likely be restrictions on it based on CNW debt holder requirements.
Thank you. And Walt, you're muted.
I'm sorry, on the far right of that last slide, it showed debt retired, I think it was in twenty thirty five, yeah. last slide, it showed debt retired, I think it was in uh twenty thirty-five, yeah.
Yeah.
And and I'm confused. It it also shows still eleven thousand or eleven million five hundred uh and eighteen thousand outstanding. I I don't understand how the debt is retired.
The 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 column to the left of it has thirteen million six hundred thousand dollars in it. That's the excess uh fund, if it's if it's accumulating each of those years, and that's enough money to pay off the eleven million.
Okay, so you use that excess to.
Right, it's just a hypothetical. Yeah, it's a hypothetical. If you don't, if you if it's not used, then the debt just stays outstanding as shown. So that's why I just drew a line there. And uh what, you know, one, once there's enough money in the the second from the right column to pay the right-hand column, the debts retire, the debts retired effectively.
Understand, thank you.
Okay. And then the last uh slide about the structures, the credit support concept, you know, bringing in other entities, Kitsepp County with their double A plus rating. You know, if you can pull that off and bring in other communities and we can get it done in a timely manner and and save on interest costs and get investment-grade ratings and not not have to fund debt service reserve funds and 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 so on. That can be a really good scenario, but I I, you know, I again, it's we're not asking, we're not asking you to do that and um, you know, uh it's this is probably the hardest of the four scenarios.
Russ, Walt again. Has has anybody talked to the port, for instance? Or you talk to either the county or the city of Bremerton? Is they have any interest in that? Because, you know, conceivably, they uh they get some tax benefit from this.
So, well, yeah, I have talked to both Commissioner Gelder and I talked to Mayor Wheeler um about this. They both said they'd want to see the feasibility study before they were kind of making any kind of commitment one way or the other. They're not opposed to it. They haven't said that they wouldn't entertain it at all. They just said that they really wouldn't comment to it uh until after they've seen the feasibility study. But they were open to the discussion, both Commissioner Gelder and Mayor Wheeler were open to the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is the slide we I alluded to earlier with some of the numbers on it. So I I, you know, the the amount of bonds that would be issued under each of the four scenarios, given some assumed interest rates and some some assumed capitalized interest um and issuance expenses are are shown across the top. At the bottom row, um, what we're doing is providing proceeds for the event centers of twenty point five million. So each one of these four scenarios that I ran would provide that same twenty point five million. The sizing of the debt has to be higher when the interest rate is higher and when the uh and when the reserve has to be, the debt service reserve fund has to be established for bondholder security. So, for example, the the subordinate subordinate debt, the average payment annual, the annual payment's about two point four million. If it's just a facility fee, it goes up to two point seven million per year. So I think if you can, if we can figure out a way to pledge on a subordinate basis, the excess sales tax away from uh away from the uh senior debt, uh we're we're going to save, you know, three hundred thousand dollars a year in in debt service. That's just money, money uh you know, money ahead. Um, that's based on a the difference in interest rates being between a six and a seven percent for those two scenarios. Um, I tried to get representative interest rates, you know, these are uh the interest rate markets are moving rapidly and up and down. Um, the, you know, they're they're uh they're, you know, relative, but I I don't, we're not selling bonds today, so I I don't know, I don't know where the bonds would would sell, you know, in a in a marketing at this point in time. But you can see, like, for example, again, capitalized interest, if we have capitalized interest for two years, if the interest rate is lower, that you have to, you raise less funds in capitalized interest versus, you know, like the facility fee structure. It's an extra million dollars of borrowing just for interest in in that scenario. Are there questions about this uh sort of financial summary, scenario summary?
I don't see any hands raised.
All right, I did want to touch on interest during construction. Uh, we we have, I I believe we've had this uh as a topic before, but I wanted to, I wanted to talk about it. It it comes up as a question, what happens for the, you know, thirteen eighteen, thirteen to fifteen months of construction? You know, how does debt get paid? Because it has to be borrowed in advance. The most common way is through adding capitalized interest to the bond amount. And that's probably ninety to ninety-nine percent of all bond transactions that uh have a construction period that don't have, where there's no revenue. Uh, they they use capitalized interest uh in the bond amount. Those funds are borrowed monies, they're invested in a US Treasury security while they're not being used. And they are, uh they go to pay debt service. In in all the scenarios that I ran for this presentation, I put two full years of capitalized interest into the bond amount. We we just want to be careful and cautious about having enough interest uh before the project has revenues and before the project is built. There's a, there's some, you know, other ways to to pay interest during construction. One of them is a convertible capital appreciation bond. And all that is, is a bond that has a zero percent interest rate for two years and then converts into an interest-paying bond, starting at the beginning of uh, starting at the end of year two. Um, it's a structure that can be used. I've used it before. Um, and uh, you know, it's not as common as just capitalizing the interest in the bond amount. But it can be, there there are creative structures that can be used to avoid having interest during the construction period. Uh, another scenario would be a drawdown bond where you, where the funds get drawn down, like out of a construction loan rather than a rather than a a bond issue. That can lower the amount of capitalized interest during construction. It doesn't eliminate it. But it's it's a way that some projects opt to opt to um preserve some of their bonding and then not have to borrow quite as much capitalized interest. And then the last method is just to use another source to pay, paid from existing fund balances is, you know, one, one easy way to do that or or alternate funding sources. Uh, that's, that's just a sort of an overview of 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 interest during construction. I always as default, you know, utilize capitalized interest as an addition to the bond amount. Um, but I just wanted to make people aware that there were other ways to do that if if that comes up.
And and your previous slide used capitalized interest, right?
I did two years of capitalized, two full years of capitalized interest, yeah.
Okay.
I want to go to appendix B, appendix B first. Appendix B, appendix B is an illustration, and and this is the full table from from the previous slide on the uh uh option two, the subordinate pledge. And uh what I wanted to show you here is I I didn't put any projects in project one, project two, and project three columns for this for this slide. And uh this shows what would happen as a snapshot right now. Uh, approximately two point four million in twenty twenty-two sales taxes ramped up by three percent. Existing debt service uh gets taken out of that. If we add a column for operating expenses, that would go next. Um, and you get over to the right, and I've highlighted the column revenues above debt service. That column shows how much would would be available under the subordinate uh revenue pledge right now for event center bonds, how much would be available, um not not spent, but available as a pledge. Let's go to the to the, I wanted so so what I've done is I've done three, three slides. This one doesn't have any new projects. The next slide has one new project, and the third slide has two new projects. And it shows how the revenues, how the subordinate uh revenue column changes in value based on, based on adding uh senior revenue bonds at a future date.
So what you're calling new projects are actually the ones where I was.
Right, right.
Yes, they would be, there there's no bonds associated, there's no bonds associated with those projects yet, so I call them new projects because there would be new bonds, new bonds associated, there could be new bonds associated with those projects.
One of the things I want to point out is if you see the existing debt services twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five at the eight hundred and seventy approximately thousand, that's based upon our twenty twenty-two C bond that we just negotiated with the county. But that gets drastically reduced starting in twenty twenty-six. So you see eighty-nine thousand two thirty-four, that's the debt service for the entire year. So as you go down on that debt service, that's a debt service for the entire year for our current twenty twenty-two C bond. And that's the reason why those are so drastically different from twenty twenty-two and then down through twenty twenty-six.
So right now, as the snapshot stands, this is this, the column uh that's called existing debt service is what you have in debt service. If there are future bonds issued, those would come into this blank space that I've I've left in this table. Let's go to the next slide. So I took the same slide and I inserted uh project one, I inserted a project that that has a sixteen and a half million dollar project cost. And I started it in, I had the bonds issued in twenty twenty-six with first payment in, with capitalized interest for two years, first payment in twenty twenty-eight. And I, for illustration, that's what a debt service schedule might look like for a sixteen and a half million dollar project. And if you look over to to the column that is called debt service coverage, you'll see that it starts out at about in in twenty twenty-eight at about one thirty-four and kind of goes up to about one point nine eight. That sort of meets the definition of making sure you have at least a one point two five coverage ratio for purposes of getting a rating and for purposes of issuing additional bonds. It leaves in the next column shaded in yellow, a a column of subordinate revenues that are available as a backstop against the event center bonds uh facility that are that are paid for by the facility fee. So you can see seven hundred and thirty-three thousand in twenty twenty-eight isn't enough to cover the full two point three million. But it would be, it would be a a number that would support a portion of that of that debt service if you needed to in that year for some reason. Um, i- if the three million of forty thousand or the the ramped up pro uh facility fee debts, revenues uh didn't materialize or or were were or fell short. And then you can see as it goes, as we go down in years, how much subordinate debt uh how much subordinate revenue is available for that uh event center bond. And then appendix D, same same chart, except I've added under project two, I've added two point seven million dollars of additional of additional proceeds and and a start date uh a couple of years later, a a year later than the uh than the project one column. And again, on the debt service coverage, I'm I'm trying to keep the the minimum coverage at one point two five times. So that's how much project dollars could be raised uh in this scenario to maintain the one twenty-five coverage in year twenty thirty in this table. And then the highlighted column would be subordinate sales taxes that would be available for use for event center bonds in a scenario where there there needed to be some revenue support. Uh, there was a shortfall in in revenue, again, in the facility, in the facility fee. So those are illustrations about future projects, but I, you know, it's meant to show that there's debt capacity for for future projects and the subordinate pledge. If we describe the subordinate pledge to bondholders properly and disclose properly what our intentions are in the future, um, we we can enhance the 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 facility fee revenue with a subordinate pledge without, without, I think, really impacting uh a a lot of what KPFD's plans are.
We've seen no hands raised for additional questions or comments.
Let's go to the the next slide, which is the uh waterfall. I wanted to go over this, I wanted to go over this slide because this is a a representative um picture of how the overall project is and is anticipated to work and and will there be changes to this or will there be tweaks to this? Yes, as we as we write bond indentures and as the uh the the legal team gets involved in in this in the structuring, but this is how I would envision this project to uh to work. The revenues of CNW will be deposited in an account at a trustee, a bond trustee. Um, that would be called, those revenues would be going to a revenue fund. From that revenue fund, there would be a budgeted monthly operation revenue that the trustee would turn back over to CNW for their monthly operating expenses. The way that works is there's a an annual budget process, CNW would submit a budget to the trustee and that budget, the that budgeted uh annual budget would be broken down into monthly uh expenditures and those would be automatically turned back over to CNW to pay the operations of the facility. The next line is a facility fee and the lease payment. So the facility fee, the five percent to KPFD and the lease payment that goes to the port of Bremerton would come out next. And those would be, there would be instructions with the trustee and those dollars would be sent over wherever they were directed to be sent, probably into a bond indenture, a revenue fund of a bond indenture for for bonds associated with 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 those projects. After that, the CNW senior debt principal and interest gets paid. After principal and interest gets covered, the debt service reserve fund gets replenished if it got used. If it didn't get used, you skip down to the next line item, which is the operating reserve. There will be an operating reserve requirement that CNW will have that they will have to maintain an account with the trustee with a certain amount of money in it to be funded over uh each month over time as revenues come in. Same with the next item, which is a repair and replacement fund, that will have a dollar amount associated to it. And that will be uh also taken out of the revenues uh and and held by the trustee for the benefit of bondholders. Then I've inserted something called a public partner reserve fund. This is where uh a reserve would be established that would be solely for the benefit of KPFD and Port of Bremerton as it relates to replenishing the reserve funds on any bonds that they would that that KPFD or P or P O B would issue. So in other words, it's another fund that can go to replenish a debt service reserve before any sales tax revenues would have to be tapped in the case, like you said, when when there's not enough revenues or revenues fall short. So this is a, this is a supplemental reserve that's funded at the bond trustee, held by the bond trustee, and they're instructed to turn it over to uh KPFD or P O B bonds to re to replenish reserve, the reserves there if those reserves get tapped for debt service. Then there is a a working capital reserve that is required to be uh established and held by the trustee. After that, if there's any subordinate debt of CNW, that gets paid. And then the balance of the money that comes in each month goes into the surplus fund. And so that's what we refer to, we call a waterfall and how the money comes in and it flows down the waterfall and fills up these buckets. And these buckets act as reserves for the benefit of bondholders uh and and get held by an independent, by a trustee. Uh, usually that would be somebody like US Bank or or uh a United Missouri Bank or some or or Bank of New York, but somebody that is a, you know, a a master bond trustee and and has, does that as a business. So that's that's a my vision, the the vision of how this trust indenture concept would work or could work. Um, you know, could we add things to it? Sure. But that's a, that's a snapshot of the structure of that.
Hey, so let's uh open it up for any comments, uh Ryan, Scott, Ryan, Mark. Any more word members, comments, additional questions? And then we will continue, Jim, as then I'll ask you what was the, what was the hope from tonight? What was the hope that you would get out of? What was the, what was the hope from tonight? What was the hope that you would get out of tonight? What are you asking the board? For tonight?
Yeah, I'd like to do that right at the end, when we, when we get, we'll pull the time, the timetable up right at the end when we're done. And we go through that right at the end, but yeah, I'd like to see what kind of questions we have and. And Mark, you know, just, I I just want, I want to make sure from a legal standpoint, you know, these things I've I've laid out here. You've had a chance to look at, are there comments from from your angle, from your end? On, you know, is anything in here that you've seen that that can't be done or needs needs a further explanation?
No, this is Mark Reno, Bond Counsel to the PFD, that all of this is pretty straightforward from my perspective. From, you know, from a legal perspective, that the real, the real issues here are more financial and cash flow. Once, and that's what we've been saying all along, once we, once we get an idea of, you know, what a reliable. Amount of cash that is generated by this facility is then then. All of the concepts that you presented are, and I think you did a great job. I think, I think this is, this slide deck really does. Really does incorporate all of the decisions that the board needs to, needs to consider. And but but, but once we make those decisions, then then getting it on paper, which is my job, is is not. Is not all that difficult, given, given the work that you've put into it. So we appreciate it.
And Scott and Ryan, you know, anything from a, from a financial perspective, did I miss anything on the existing debt? Or I I know, you know, sometimes in our emails, it might, we might, or our discussions, I want to make sure I've covered everything. That the way we've, you know, talked about it.
I think you have, maybe we could slide back to your slide one, because I, again, and I agree with Mark, I think you've you've presented the options, I guess, is kind of. How we've sort of thought of them. You know, from a. A gross revenue slash first lien bonds. All the way to just using the facility fee as as a pledge. And then, of course, the the fourth option there, you know, terrific if others. You know, you you were either able to part it out or through some sort of credit enhancement. Somebody wants to back it, you know, that kind of those first and fourth items, I think for, you know, many PFDs in the state. Is how, how a lot of the bonds are sold. The, you know, I think on the number one item, I think, Jim, as we talked, and I think as I brought up with the executive committee. I mean, I think that's probably a challenging one for the PFD, just because of the other. Potential bonding that they have. And the simply the the project payments, I think that they want to make to other projects, whether or not they bond. Which I think also probably gets us to the, so I think gross pledge, again, first lien, I think is a challenge. On the the subordinate where, you know, senior lien bonds get paid, I mean, I think maybe from the PS. PFD's perspective, although, you know, I I would want them to speak for themselves here. You know, I think not only would they think that PFD debt issued would be paid first, but then also, again, kind of their higher priority. Projects would be paid, whether, again, that's debt service payments or project pay-as-you-go payments. So then in the end, I don't know whether that necessarily leaves an appreciable amount of net revenue. You know, to make a a pledge there, you know, for for bondholders or whether they simply. It simply starts looking more and more like a facility fee revenue bond. And, but again, I guess these, these really are the scenarios and really kind of a thought of, you know, maybe the the ultimate question is. Whether, you know, it gets answered tonight or or later on, but you know, is this something that the PFD wants to support? And at what level would they want to support that?
Yeah, I mean, I I kind of like this, I I kind of like the, you know, the subordinate pledge of sales taxes as a backstop. I I think we have to be careful in dealing with investors in those bonds to make sure we we document. The the things that are a priority and we make sure that we identify them for disclosure purposes. So we're not, you know, in any way misleading anybody, but I do think that there's value, even if the subordinate pledge is a small amount of money. Leftover, I do think that it's valuable because it's something that the that the market is used to seeing. And and I think more potential, more investors have the ability to buy those kinds of bonds. If they can get comfortable that that the revenues are supportable through the feasibility study, but that. But the subordinate pledge just kind of gives them a little bit of insurance on top of, on top of the the facility fee revenue. Even if it's a small amount, I think it's worth, I think it's worth it, and I think it really will help enable. Bonds to be qualified by more potential investors for purchase.
This is Walt again, the problem I see with number two, the subordinate pledge of sales tax is. It's not clear to me when we're going to. Know the the amount of sales tax revenue that we need to commit. To the the other three projects that were rated ahead of this one. They're they're developing rather slowly and there's some unknowns out there about how much they're going to require and when they're. Going to require it, so I'm not sure how we define how much is going to be left over.
Well, we would define, we would define what a, what a senior sales tax pledge. But we would define, we we can define what, what we think would be future projects. We can define gross sales tax and we can define leftover sales tax as what's left over after senior debt. And then we can, you know, have an allowance to fill in senior debt later. Up to a certain debt service coverage ratio, so by 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 the documentation, we can establish. We can establish parameters based on rating agency, based on the market. Parameters as to how much debt can be issued and still maintain a a investment grade rating. And then that would just be open to be issued at a future date. It would be like having the ability, it would be like having that it written in. That you have the ability to do X number of dollars worth of bonds based on this much sales tax. And of course, we don't know how much the sales tax is, so that's going to be a changing number, but we can write the document, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong. But we could write a document that would lay out by by formula. That that ability to issue additional bonds up to an amount based on a sales tax number based on a coverage ratio.
Yes, we could, we can either write a formula or a fixed dollar amount escalated, or there's, there's a number of ways of skinning that cap.
So so I think we can carve out, we can carve out future, future bonds. By, you know, by math or by or by description that would allow, would allow additional projects. Or would allow the projects that at least are on the, you know, one, two, and three that are on the table right now to be financed with bonds.
Thank you.
My, my, my understanding about the the other three projects is that those, that those projects don't have a revenue stream that comes with them. Like the CNW project does, so they're, they don't have like a five percent facility fee or a, or some other stream of revenues. So those projects, my understanding is that they would actually use the sales tax to make debt service payments for for those, for those bonds. Whereas we're, we're not contemplating even using the subordinate sales tax dollars unless unless there's a, you know, a terrible scenario here. Because we've got a revenue stream that, again, it has to be, you know, needs to be validated by this independent report. But a revenue stream that we're comfortable with more than supports the the event center bonds.
So in scenario number three, with the new sales tax, but why do we need the PFD for that? If it's only supported by the facility fee, couldn't they just go get, CNW just go out and get a loan for that, cover that, donate themselves? I mean, what's the purpose of us being part of?
One of the things we're trying to do is is differentiate the pieces of the project that are, you know, the parts of the project and different and have. You know, a community support of a project, yes, you're not pledging any sales tax, but having the KPFD put their name out there and say. You know, we, we're going to fund the construction of the event centers. Twenty point five million dollars using the facility fee that we're expecting to get from from the facility. That looks good in the eyes of investors who are investing in CNW's bonds. The sixty percent of the project that is going to be senior bonds of CNW, that looks good in their eyes. If if we, if we don't do it that way and we pull, we we take the, we we take the money into CNW's debt. Then it just makes their debt seventy-five percent of the of the project and that, that's really not, that's really not. Doable as a, right now in the market as a, as a debt equity ratio. It moves the, it brings in, yes, it's a, it's fees that, it's a, it's a fee that's being paid by CNW, but it's coming off. It's coming off the top and it is looked at as an additional. Public partner in in the bond community.
My understanding, maybe Brian, you can help me, that the RCW requires the participation of. Of the PFD in order to collect the five percent admission.
Somebody beeped him.
Sorry, I unmute it.
I thought that the PFD had to be involved to enable the collection of the five percent admission fee.
No, I would say that differently, so so if this is a regional center, special event center, the PFD can provide. You know, fu- funding to it, we went through this a couple of months ago, there there's certain types of. Funding. Taxations that that are authorized. By the statute, but it's a pretty narrow range and anything outside of that range required voter approval. So I I think the notion was the PFD could not be directly involved in collecting the tax. Because it would need to get voter approval for that to be a PFD tax.
But now the PFD wasn't involved in this at all, the port could still, or the county could still collect five percent tax, right?
Well, I I think the workaround to going to the voter, you know, for approval for for an admissions tax. Was the PFD would not be charging a tax, instead. Circuit would self-impose a facilities charge on admission. And they, they, they are creating that imposition and they are collecting the revenues. But dedicating them to repayment of the bonds that the PFD would issue.
But we don't need the PFD to be involved to collect that five percent. If the county did the revenue bond, they could do that, couldn't they?
Yeah, that, well, I I assume so. I mean, the county has a broader taxing authority than than the PFD does. I I don't know specifically. What the county can do, but it is a broader taxing authority than the PFD.
So the revenue bond, then it's a step away, the the fee is put on, facility fee is put on by. CNW, the funds go into escrow, whatever you want to call, and and then proceeds to PFD to make payment. Set the step, does it go to PFD or does it go directly to the bond?
It goes to wherever it's directed to go, but if you have bonds outstanding, you'll probably have a bond indenture. And that bond indenture will require that all revenues come in to a revenue fund and then get waterfall down, just like the waterfall I showed you. So I, they can go wherever you direct them is the answer, but the most likely place they'll go is to a bond trustee to make debt service payments.
So we're a step moved really from touching the money.
And then at the end of the, you'll get, at the end, there's a surplus fund and that's what, that's the surplus.
You're right, Aaron, the money doesn't come to us and then we turn around and pay it to the, pay the debt service now.
And this would be done with a contract between us and CNW. Since it's not a tax, it would be a contract.
Yeah, whatever the lawyers decide, whatever they decide to call it, I I'm happy with whatever they call it, it's, it's, it's a law, legal issue.
So we've touched on. The county, you said the county and the city of Bremerton are both going to look at these building studies. Where is CNW talking to the court about the infrastructure, when is it eleven, eleven something?
The, let me see if Jim's on still. Jim, do you want to talk about the, about the CNW and the ports and the infrastructure? Oh, Jim, I'm sorry.
There we go, are we there?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, all right, sorry about that, yeah, I lost my mute. And just so you know, I'm actually in in a hospital picking up my wife, so I don't have a lot of time here, but I've been listening in. So we, we've had talks about a lot of the infrastructure that's already in place and the potential additional infrastructure. And commissioners, you know, they came and did their presentation and, you know, until we see. The analysis that you guys are waiting for as well, that there's been no decision as far as how the, how the additional gets funded at this point.
Are there any other questions for Jim before we take a look at the timetable?
What would happen to the collection of the five percent admission fee? Out in the out years, once the bond was paid off, where does that money go?
From a bondholder perspective, that that facility fee goes away as soon as the bonds are paid off. The five percent no longer becomes a collectible item, it's, it's, it's not an admissions fee. It's a, it's a voluntary facility fee that CNW is collecting and giving, turning over. So that the debt for the event centers can be paid off, once that debt is paid off, that facility fee no longer. No longer exists, and that's because the senior bondholders for CNW's debt want their debt to be paid off. And they they need, they they need to, you know, they'll have sixty-eight million dollars worth of of bonds outstanding on the senior debt for CNW. So once that debt is paid off, after, after all of the, all of the senior debt is paid off. You know, then I think it's up to CNW and what they would, what what they would do as far as any ongoing facility fees. But but from a bondholder perspective, we have to protect the interests of of all the bondholders, including any KPFD or port bondholders. If they, that that exist, along with the CNW bondholders. So so yes, that that fee would, that fee would, the facilities charge would would go away. And it could be replaced by something.
Go away as far as the PFD's.
Yes, and it could be replaced by something else, but the, that, not until after, you know, CNW debt bonds are paid.
Thank you.
So who would be responsible for maintaining this? I mean, the the buildings are going to have to be maintained during course of this, with the CNW, the port.
Well, CNW would 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 have repair and replacement funds established under their bond indenture. To to, at amounts that an engineer has has established, they want is to sufficient to. You know, maintain the repair and replacement of the facility, so that's money that is collected and held by the bond trustee, as long as there's senior debt outstanding.
Okay.
Those things, operating reserves, repair and replacements, working capital reserves, those are all mandated by bondholders. And the bondholders and and the money is for the benefit of the bondholders if there's a problem.
Right.
Right, but it's there so that CNW can go in and repair a roof or do, it's therefore a purpose of of the maintenance of.
The CNW would be responsible using this pool of money that's been set aside.
Yes.
And they would keep that pool even after this five percent facility fee is done, they would continue to put money in there for.
As long as there are senior bonds outstanding that are CNW bonds for for the project. That trust indenture is still in place and all the requirements of that. That trust indenture is still in place and all the requirements of that trust indenture will still hold.
Then what happens after that?
When the bonds are paid off, uh, there, there's, there, there's no longer a bond trustee involved, then, then it's um. The, you know, the KPFD bonds would be paid off, the CNW bonds would be paid, there would be no, there'd be no public debt presumably. If, if that indenture goes away, uh, and so then it's, it's CNW, it's up to CNW to maintain their facility.
Okay.
So, so this is Mark, this is Mark Greeno. I think, um, I just wanted to. Chime in, I think that the, the point is, is that the five percent fee, the sole purpose of the five percent fee is to pay off the bonds. Um, and, and the obligation as being proposed here is that the five percent fee is in place so long as there's debt to pay off. But once the debt's paid off, then the, then the deal is done. Is that, is that? I, I think I'm reading that right.
Yes, that's, that, Mark, that's the concept and that, and, and therefore then the senior bondholders for the CNW debt will have that additional revenue. Uh, to help pay off the remaining balance of whatever debt is still outstanding uh on the CNW debt. And, and, and so from a debt standpoint, that's how I'd like the debt structure. Is there some other way that um CNW wants to uh, you know? Pay KPFD something for some, for something else. Uh, subordinate to senior bonds after senior bonds are paid. That's not my, that wouldn't be something that I would have any say in or that I, that would. You know, that as, as long, I, I'm, I'm sort of there for the bondholders and, and the debt. But other, other things, I, you'd have to talk to C, to, to CNW directly about, you know, other concepts. But um, you, you know, I just laid it out in terms of, of how, how I think the trust indenture should. Should act i- in a responsible manner for the benefit of all the debt holders in the, in the whole project.
Yeah, so, so again, Mark Greeno, um, the, 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 the purpose of the transaction is to finance. The facility, it is not to establish a perpetual relationship with CNW in which KPFD. And CNW have some kind of relationship outside the financing. Once the, once the financing is paid off. Then the relationship um is terminated.
That, that's how I envision the financing. If, if KPFD and CNW want to have a different, have a relationship outside. Of the, you know, trust indenture and, and have something that's subordinate or have additional, you know. Things that, that, that they do together, that's uh, that, you know, I think that's entirely up to the, the parties, Mark.
Andrew, go ahead. Andrew, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, yeah, I, I would say one thing on that and that we have had some discussions initially. I, I'd say yes that. You know, we're, we're talking about maintenance in perpetuity of this facility, so we do have to have some funds going forward. And that, that facility fee in some respects going forward would still be used for main. And so the facility, so I wouldn't say we need all of it, but I. Some other small portion of that that could come back, but that hasn't been finalized. It could be finalized into a contract as part of the overall. Uh, funding of the project and uh, but that hasn't been finalized. It has been talked about by uh members of CNW, so.
And then Scott, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I guess, you know, we've talked about, I guess, this five percent fee, but I guess if. If a higher revenue was needed to attract investors to this, then, and I think what the five percent was tied in with the potential admissions. Tax. Um, so I guess not having that, we've been talking about a five percent um on the gross revenues. But again, if, if it was needed for, to sweeten the pot for potential investors. Uh, for additional coverage to lower interest rates, I guess, could it be that it's not five percent, but it's six percent, but or seven percent or something like that?
Yeah, I, I think the, um, you know, I think the, one of the things that we, we really need to do with respect to this. Facility fee is identify, identify how much coverage is needed. To sell the facility fee revenue bonds of KPFD. And, and, and I, and that's why I believe that the subordinate pledge as a backstop. Uh, helps, helps in that manner. It, it helps keep the interest rate a little bit lower. It helps keep, it helps keep uh. Um, you know, more bond, potential bond investors interested in, in supporting the project. And, uh, you know, so, so, yeah, I mean, we, we don't. We, we have to, we have to fine tune that, I think, Scott, but, but I, I think the five percent based on the three million. Uh, three million forty thousand should be more than sufficient, but you know, if interest rates are fifteen percent, that's a different story. I, I don't know where interest rates are going. I know they've been drastically increased over the past twelve months, so. You know, projects that looked really good twelve months ago, you know, they're harder to do today. So, you know, I don't want to make any interest rate predictions, but you know, it is a function of, of the economics of. You know, selling the, the KPFD bonds, that, that comes into consideration. But, but I think the five percent as of right now, based on projections and based on what we're looking at. Um, is, is more than sufficient, you know, to, to cover the, the KPFD debt obligation.
So I'm gonna ask the tough question. If PFD cannot participate in this project. Is there a scenario that's?
Well, if we don't have a, you know, if we don't have the twenty point five million dollars. Uh, that twenty point five million dollars has to be raised somewhere else from some other source. So um, there's a lot of potential other sources like hedge funds and equity partners and. Mezzanine financing and, you know, uh, groups that, that lend, uh, you know, lend at really high interest rates. Um, you know, th- those options are available, um subordinate debt. Twenty million, twenty five million in subordinate debt at, you know, fifteen percent interest or something like that. Um, tho- those are, those are options. They're not good options and they don't help us keep on our timetable, which is to get this project. Construction started in March of this year or April at, you know, and middle, middle to end of March uh with a closing. So, you, you know, I, I don't see that happening with um, you know, twenty five million dollars of subordinate debt that has to be issued. You know, or, or raised from um, you know, a, a, a loan to own fund or, you know, one of the, one of the. The, you know, the fifteen to twenty percenters, um, you know, but. You know, if, if, if that's the case, I mean, yeah, CNW has to, you know, go figure out how to raise the money to get the project built. Well, and, you know, that delaying the project is not a, a, a very good option when we have. You know, timetables and people that um, you know, are ready to sign up to do things. Uh, have events here and, you know, every day that goes by. You, you know, you, you can lose events very easily if you don't have your project, if you're not building your project. So I, I, you, you know, I, I don't want to under emphasize that and, and it's not easy to go raise, to go raise, uh, you know, these funds. It's a, it's a long process, so um, can it be done? Yes. Is it a good scenario? No.
And, and if it were to be done, we'd probably end up losing some pieces of this that we give. More events, so.
Right, I mean, there's the project, yeah, there might need to be expense cuts, there might need to be changes made. I, I mean, I don't know, there's a number of scenarios that, that could play out, but. But yeah, I, I mean, is it viable or could it be done? Of course it could be done, but it's certainly not the, the. The, the route that we want to take and, you know, to get this, uh, to, to have. Public partners is very important for the project and to have people's names on it and to say, you know, we, we did this with. With the help of our friends, our public friends. I mean, that, that's, that's really important in projects like this. Um, in, in, in everywhere that I've worked, where we have public, the public involved and as a part of the process and is in the mix. That those projects are successful and, and when you, when you don't have that, they have a lot harder time.
Any other uh questions uh or comments from anybody? Okay, let's go to the timetable sheet then.
Okay. Yeah, I, I alluded to this in a, a couple of minutes ago, but I wanted to just touch on, on timetable. And um, the, the, the importance, the importance of, of getting. Uh, a shovel in the ground. This is a shovel-ready project. We're ready to go except for, you know, getting the financing pulled together here and. So, you, you know, in my vision of a timetable, we would be selling bonds and have a closing um middle of March. Which means we've got to really get moving and in order to do that, um, I know the KPFD has a meeting on the twelfth. Uh, what I would like to see at some point is a motion or a resolution or something with some parameters in it. I, I know the feasibility is not available yet, but I, I'm cer- I'm certain that, that Mark could craft some. Uh, uh, some legal words that, you know, put parameters around um. KPFD, you know, continuing to want to be involved in this project. Uh, I need something to be able to go to, to go to, to the bondholders that are going to buy the sixty eight million dollar issue. To say, it looks like under, you know, certain circumstances, we, we're going to have, have the support of, of KPFD for some of these bonds. And so that, that's, that's the goal in my asking for on December twelfth, some kind of a motion or resolution or something. That I can, that I can take and, and again, it's parameters. It's um, if this happens and this happens and this happens and this happens. We would be interested in, you know, we, we, we would sell, you know, revenue bonds with a subordinate backstop for. The event center portion or, or, or we would consider a motion, you know, we would consider a resolution to, to sell those bonds. Um, so I, I just laid out, you know, what can happen over the next few months. Um. The thirteenth of January is the, uh, the last date for the feasibility study, so we'll either have it on that date or before that date. And, and everybody will be, will have access to that that has asked to see it. Um. But uh, you know, this is uh, this would be a fast timetable and, and things have to kind of get moving now. Um, in anticipation that the feasibility is going to prove out our, our numbers or, or prove out at least some reasonable. Uh, you know, reasonable uh revenue stream that, that we can adapt to a financing plan. Um, so that's uh. That is uh, the last slide that I was uh planning to go over tonight. If there are other questions, I'm happy to answer more questions. If you have them.
What are we gonna hear from Scott? Never do we ask other questions now?
Yeah.
I have a question for Scott. So if we were to do this twenty million dollar bond, revenue bond, how would that affect us doing the other bond for Paul's bow and Port Orchard?
Yeah, as, 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 if it were done kind of on the option one, uh, if this bond were. In a senior position on your gross, on your sales tax revenues, um. I think you would have a, a tough time selling your uh. Your other bonds, the Port Orchard, potentially Paul's Bow, uh, you know, at a. At a reasonable uh interest rate or at all, so that, that's I guess why I see maybe that first option as. Um, maybe the most difficult option for the PFD, because I, again, I think it would, it would put these bonds, you know. At the same level, but again, those other bonds wouldn't be coming to market for a couple of years. Uh, now. You know, potentially in a couple of years, maybe the project is up and running and it's clear that uh, the. Uh, the CNW bonds are being paid completely by uh project revenues. But I guess not knowing that sitting here, it would be, I think, a challenge to say, let's put the CNW bonds. At a, at a first lien on your sales tax revenues.
And on the second scenario, where it's subordinate, I still just, if they don't generate enough money. And we don't have enough subordinate money, who pays for the bond? If it's, if they don't generate enough revenue and we don't have enough revenue after, since it's subordinate, where does that extra money come from?
Originally out of the reserves?
Originally out of the reserves and if there is no money coming in from CNW, then there's no project, right?
Right.
So there's no money, right? So just like if your sales tax evaporated down to nothing, right? If you had sales tax bonds, you have debt outstanding now and you have sales tax bonds. If you don't get any sales tax collections, where's the money come from to pay your sales tax bonds? You, you don't have it, right? So it's the same, it's a, it's the same answer. It's a different, it's a different column of revenue, but it's the same answer.
Right, but what I'm wondering, this might be better for Scott, how does that affect us as the bondholder if we can't pay the bonds? Scenario two. I mean, do they say we're bad, bad bond people and never give us another bond or what happens?
Well, I think in, in scenario two, uh, and again, I think we would have to probably limit the amount of. Revenue that we think is available, because I think we'd have to protect for the ability for you to issue. Your bonds for your projects and to pay for your other projects that you have as a higher priority. Um, but I, I think, you know, the investor coming in, I guess, would have to be clear-eyed that. The majority of the payment needs to come from the project, so they would, they would need to feel comfortable with that and that there, you know. Could be up to a certain amount uh of revenue available from uh, from the PFD, so. You know, does anybody want to default uh on, on bonds? No, you know, I think as Jim said, there's, there'll be other pots of money available. There'll be one year of debt service reserve set aside. With the initial issuance of the bond, so those will, that'll be there. Uh. But again, I think the discussion would be how much, how much revenue after the payment of other things. Could the PFD reasonably say, you know, this, this could be available for the CNW project on a more subordinate lien?
And under scenario two, that, the, the, that decision process would just drive whatever interest rate in terms you could get. From a lender, is that correct?
Y- y- yeah, I think as, as we put, you know, more and more restrictions on. Um, less and less security uh for a potential investor, yes, I think. Uh, either the, the world of the investors who would be participating in this will start to dwindle and then. Potentially the rate needed to get them interested in participating would go up.
Now, I don't know anything about this, so these questions are dumb, just say so, but. Are you able to buy, for instance, an insurance policy to say if the revenues don't meet this, then the insurer is gonna pay the difference? Do they do that?
Well, that's, that's a, that's a great question. I think uh Jim and I and all of us in the bond world would know that. That used to be a very common thing uh for many different bonds back in two thousand eight. There was, uh, yeah, you would buy bond insurance at a very nominal fee. You would get actually a triple A rating from that bond insurer. Uh, it was so cheap that most people did that. Uh, then after the two thousand eight financial crisis. Uh, a lot of those folks went away and there's, there's barely anybody available. My experience on bond insurance and Jim, I'll, I'd be happy to hear yours. Uh, is, it seems that bond insurers uh want to uh, want to participate in the projects that they think. Uh, will never use them and the ones that could utilize insurance these days don't get insurance.
That is correct. It's, it's difficult to get insurance on project revenue bonds or, or even revenue bonds. Um, you can get insurance on general obligation bonds all day long and you don't need it. So uh, so it's um, yeah, it, it's, it, the, the market really got just flipped upside down in the financial crisis and it hasn't. It hasn't, uh, it's, it was a great option up to two thousand eight and, and now. It's hard, it's almost impossible, but, but it's a very, but we did a lot of insured bonds, a, a ton.
I guess I have one last question for Scott then. So if we bond, for instance, twenty million and let's say twelve and then eight. Do we have a limit to where all of a sudden they say, you know what, you're at thirty five million, you don't get to bond anymore?
Yeah, I mean, I guess a little bit could be thought of as just a sheer dollar, but I, I think a lot of it's gonna be looked at. Um, you know, Jim has talked a lot about coverage and that really I think is, is what will be a main driver is. How much revenue do you have available above and beyond your debt service? Uh, that will be the, the critical question. So yes, as you, as you layer on more and more, uh, that, that takes the revenue capacity. Um, you will have fewer opportunities to bond or that bonding, you know, may get a, get a worse rating, but again, if you have it all on the same. Lean level, um. Yeah, it, it just, again, the more and more you, you bond, it, it'll be more and more difficult. Really, the coverage will be what we'll be looking at.
Um, and this is Mark, this is Mark Greeno. There, there is a.
Um, and this is Mark, this is Mark Greeno. There, there is a statutory limit.
Not.
The amount of indebtedness that you can incur that is backed by taxes.
And how do you know what that is?
It's, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll look that up for you. It's, it's a percentage of the assessed value of your territory.
Okay, thank you.
And Jim, the one point two five, that's a cutoff for investor grade, is what that is?
Well, you know, rating agencies won't tell you what the debt service coverage test has to be. What they do is they give you a range and they say it's one point two five to one point four, but other factors are considered in the rating. So I just use one twenty-five just because I, it seems to be pretty consistently that, you know, that, that. That's a reasonably defensible number. But is that the exact number? Uh, it's other, it's a whole bunch of other factors that can come into play, including something called an additional bonds test. They'll say you can issue additional bonds under your resolution or indenture. If you can prove that the future coverage will be one point two five or higher or one point four or higher. So there, there's things. So, so if your revenues are increasing, then you can issue additional bonds in the future, absorbing that additional revenue. So there's a, there's a lot of factors that come, that come into play, but I, I use one twenty-five as a, as a sample, it's pretty, pretty defensible.
So Jim, I want to make sure that the board understands the ask for the December meeting. And that's an adoption or a motion, uh, to approve parameters of continuing to go down this path. But it's not making up financial obligations simply because the feasibility study wouldn't be in yet. What you're looking for is, is more than anything else, the board. Uh, passing a motion to say, we continue to support going after this. This is what our intention is to go. We get the feasibility study, we share that feasibility study with others, we move that on to Department of Commerce. And we continue going down the path of trying to get it in one of those four scenarios. Is, is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. And, and, you know, I don't want to necessarily rule out any of the four scenarios, but. I don't, I don't really think that option one is, is going to be a viable option. I mean, we can continue to have it on the list, but. I, I, I pretty much like to go with the subordinate pledge and the, the revenue stream and. And, and we'll, we'll see what the feasibility study validates as far as, you know, the five percent facility fee validation of the revenue. But, um, I, 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 I'm making the assumption that we're going to get a, a very strong feasibility report, but I, I mean. I, it, it's out of my control and I, I won't see it until it's done. So.
Right.
Um.
And, and then I would.
Russ, Russ, this is Mark. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mark, go ahead.
Oh, uh, it's Mark Greeno, um, but the, what, what Jim has articulated before is. The, the purpose of the resolution is not just to have a resolution. The purpose is that. That this financing only works if everybody who is putting money into the project shows up at closing at the same time. In other words, the condition precedent to the P F D, uh, incurring indebtedness is that the other. You know, all the money is in place, uh, at closing. And likewise with their, with the other financing that, that C N W is pursuing. Their condition precedent is that the P F D show up with its money. Um, so everybody has to show up together at closing with enough money. Um, to, to build this project because unless all of the money is there, then nobody can guarantee that the project gets built. So, so that's the, that's the purpose that, so that C N W has something in writing when they're going out to private lenders. Um, showing a, a, a concrete demonstration of interest on the behalf of the board. It does not have to be binding. It just has to be concrete.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure the board understands, you know, exactly. The, on the language of the motion and then understand what it is they're voting on. John, you had a question?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Uh, is there a reason that we would be waiting? Is there additional information that would become available to us? Between now and December and why we wouldn't have that discussion now?
Uh, I, I think, I, 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 this is Mark Greeno. I mean, we just have not crafted the language. We, we, we didn't know what the sense of the board would be. And, and we didn't, we, we didn't anticipate or need, I don't think, um, on the schedule that's been proposed, a, a statement today. Um. It, it, and, and I, I, I honestly don't think that wordsmithing it on the fly today would be valuable. Um, because I think that there's probably some specific language that C N W wants and, and that we would like to, you know, consider. Uh, so, so I don't think there's any need for it, for it today, but, um, if the board has. Uh, input into what we are crafting over the next month, then it would be very valuable for us.
So Mark, what's the difference between binding and concrete?
Uh, I, I, that's, that, that was a, that, I, I. I tried to mix my metaphors in a way that nobody would try and, uh. I, I think we need something on paper, but that does not bind you. So a letter of intent, a memorandum of understanding. That makes very clear that this is your intent, but, uh, but is not contractual and binding in nature.
So interesting.
I guess my question was more directed than, uh, it, those are resources that we'd be using at the K P F D. Should we be directing Russ and, uh, those we contract with to spend their time and energy doing that?
Yes. And, and I think, John, I, I agree with Mark. I, what I would like to do with the board's approval. Is continue with, work with Mark, Brian, Scott and Ryan and Jim. To kind of track, craft what that would look like. So at the December board meeting. The board has it in advance to take a look at and they know what the motion would be.
And Russ, this is Mark. The, the board may not, um, be aware of all of the particulars of our engagement, but, um. Although we're lawyers, we do not bill by the hour. We, we bill, um, if and when a project is done. Um, so, so there's no, there's no additional, uh, cost for us to work on this over the. O- o- over the timeframe. If, if, if in fact you get to a deal and you finance this, then we get paid. Um, and if not, that's, um, that's just part of how we, uh, arrange our business.
Okay. We appreciate that, Mark. Yeah, Tom, did you have any comment? For questions?
No, I'm, 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 this has all been super informative. I, I've heard hypothetical and assumption. Um, and, and so really what, what is going to be critical for, for me is, is to see the feasibility report.
So if December, I, I understand the idea of having a P F D resolution. But you wouldn't, are you expecting to have one, any of the other party sit or bring a person just stepping up to that first?
Uh, well, I think the only other party would be the Ford and I, I, we've not had that conversation with them. Uh, as far as I know, I haven't had that conversation with them. We have had conversations about the, the infrastructure and. The discussions have, we've had phone discussions, but and I think they presented on board meeting, but, um. You know, yeah, we, I, I think we'll probably ask them for something at some point. I, I, I don't know what the timetable is for that, but.
Yeah, cause I'm looking at it thinking about feasibility study comes to January, which is only a month after this meeting. But then there's review time that I, I understand what you're saying, you, you really like that paper now to get out of the market.
Well, I, I'm talking to institutional investors, you know, uh, as, on, on a daily basis about projects. But I can't, I can't share very much information about specifics about projects with them unless, unless it's accurate information. And I also can't sell something to them before there's an offering document that's approved. And so I have to walk a fine line between, you know. To having general conversations and getting some feedback, which, you know, sometimes they don't want to do that unless they, they know there's a real project. So if, if, so the project becomes real when parties start to say, we're, we're pursuing this. If these things happen or when these things happen or subject to the review of these things, that starts to become real. Uh, if I just go and say, well, we've got this idea, uh, it, it doesn't carry as much water.
That's why I was asking about the Ford. Now having similar thinking for it, does that strengthen your position when you're?
Oh, it would, it would definitely strengthen it. I just don't know what the schedule is for, for meeting with them. I, I, I don't have anything on my calendar right now.
And you just talked about selling the C N W bonds, not ours, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Yes, you have your own financial advisors that are, are, would handle that. I'm happy to be a helpful, a helpful person in that regard, but, and, and help. Answer questions or be a part of it, but I, that wouldn't be, you, you have your advisors that, uh, that, uh. You know, you've hired to do that, so.
Oh, Russ. I have a question. This is Walt. On, on the, uh, option number two. Where the, um, Circuit of the Northwest bonds are subordinate bonds. What, what makes them subordinate? Is it a timing thing or the, just, we have to say they're subordinate? And if a year later or two years later, we sell bonds. To fund one of the projects which we have rated higher than the Circuit of the Northwest, but is behind them on a timetable. Uh, do they become senior bonds and Circuit of the Northwest stays subordinate? I, I, I don't know how we define who's subordinate and who isn't in terms of, uh, P F D bonding debt.
So, so this is Mark Greeno. That's, that's a really good question. Um, and normally in this type of a structure. Um, the, the, the subordination goes month by month. So the money goes, runs through the waterfall, as you saw. The senior bondholders get paid first and then the junior bondholders, the subordinate bondholders get paid next. Uh, and then the month is over. Um, and then the next month, you kind of run the same waterfall. Uh, the, the, the protection that you would write into the documents is that you are allowed to incur. A certain amount of senior debt and put those people up in the senior bucket, even though. Their debt was incurred later. So it's different from a home mortgage where the first one is first and the second one is second. You actually reserve the right to continue to, uh, issue debt on the senior level. Or refund debt at the senior level, um, even though the subordinate bondholders came first in time.
So we, we could sell Circuit of the Northwest bonds under scenario two. I don't know, next March or April or whenever we could do it and, and a year later sell twelve million dollars worth of bonds for our. Port Orchard project, which was our number one priority project and, and the Port Orchard bonds. Would be senior to the Circuit of the Northwest bond?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If there are any other questions, um, I need to get Jim to the ferry terminal so he can catch the ferry and, and get back over and catch his flight. Right. So.
I think my last question, Russ, and I don't know if it's for, for, for Jim. Uh, would be i- if, if we're looking for that decision at the next meeting. And I, I think I have a little consternation. That's a tight timeline, uh, for this group to operate out of, uh, but. I, I don't know, and I think we've asked in the past, uh, I'm not in the habit of, uh, I think when I merge two organizations, I want to make sure. Uh, there's complete transparency. I don't know that I've seen any kind of financials from Circuit of the Northwest. That would be something that I would want to see if I were to be, uh, uh, moving forward.
You, uh, uh, John, would say, are you referring to like a financial model of the project that shows what revenues would come in and, and expenses would go out? Is that, is that, that, because there are, there are no audited financial, I, I don't believe there are audited financial statements. I think the, what you're asking for is the projections of the future, future revenues and expenses. Is that correct?
Uh, that, and I, as I do believe they operate today, they operate the existing track, do they not?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, yeah.
I, I can check with them on, on, you know, the, what, what would be available in that regard. I, I don't know if it would be relevant to, to the new project. However, but I can, I can check with them on that and, you know, we can, we can get back to you on that.
I always find it relevant to know somebody's liabilities and assets before getting into business with them.
Well, I want to make sure the board is, has no objection to me continuing to work with. Our advisors, bond counsel, legal counsel and with Jim to prepare for, uh, a motion to be presented. In December.
This is Walt. I'm good with it. Yeah. I mean, it's non-binding, so I'm totally okay with it.
All right.
And you know, and to be honest, if it helps, if it gets done sooner, I'm not opposed to having a special meeting.
Okay, okay. Um, Tom, are, Tom and John are?
Have a special meeting.
Okay. Tom and John, are you okay with, uh, me continuing to proceed?
I am.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay. All right. And then as I can feed more information to the board, then I will do that. But if it means that we pull together another special meeting before a board meeting on the twelfth, we'll make it happen. Okay, great. All right, thank you.
The world during the meeting.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Appreciate the time. Thank you. Thank you.
Very clear, Jim.
I'm. So it's very informative.